Senate Natural Resources deciding if they have enough issues that they need a amendments committee.
Yeah.
They are, yeah. We're good enough.
Call the meeting of the Chittenden County Republic, Republican. My apologies, Republican. I gee, I know this. Call the order, the meeting of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission for May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. God, well, I guess that was bound to happen at some point. Are there any, there are a few changes to the agenda, and then I'll ask if there are any others. First of all, Josie Galley is not able to join us this evening for the autonomous vehicle testing presentation, and we'll plan on rescheduling that at some point that works for everybody. In addition, we're going to move the 2019 Plan BTV item up to item five, so it'll be right after the approval of the minutes. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none.
You need a motion to approve the changes, or are you making, using chairman's?
Nah, we just, we don't need that. And next item is the consent agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to pull any of the consent agenda items off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm in on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Next up is approval of the minutes of the April seventeenth, two thousand.
Number two.
Yes, of a comment period.
Oh, I jumped over that. Right.
We have total Roberts rules breakdown here. What's going on?
Must be I'm a short timer. I am just losing it here.
Can you please focus, Mr. Chair?
And of course, and I remember it every time that there's nobody here, so I apologize profusely, folks. I did skip over number two, which is the public comment period we provide to members of the public who wish to comment on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Are there members of the public who would like to make comments on something? We can start there, sir, and we'll work our way down. If you could introduce yourself.
Can we sit here?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. First, I'll start with some bloggers around here. My name is Tony Reddington. I lived on the greatest street in Burlington on the car plan that's underway called Northern South Menusky. And I'll also send, and we have a couple copies of the designs, preliminary idea for designs of the Northern South Menusky and the greatest street in Burlington, so you can plan that. What makes the greatest street? It's very simple. We did it in the North Avenue Corridor Plan, which I was part of a few years ago, and that is you have cycle track protected bike lanes from end to end, and you have roundabouts at key intersections that reduce serious and fatal injuries by ninety percent. No great mystery. In the case of Northern South Menusky, the difference is that our cycle track, we're pushing for, some of us are pushing for sidewalk level cycle track that benefits businesses because it allows neighborhood people to go onto a sidewalk level, bike space to access businesses, restaurants, commercial activities, and courses that we want to visit. Having said that, I represent the North Avenue, excuse me, I represent the Pine Street Coalition, which is a group of a hundred-plus citizens, mostly from the south end in Burlington, that's now almost three years old, were voluntary, and we, I've been fighting the current design of the Champlain Parkway now during that period. The opposition to the Parkway and its recent revision really began at the Walk Bike Council, which is a city committee that's staffed by the Department of Public Works. And in two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen, they sent detailed criticisms of the design, and in two thousand sixteen, after some minor tweaks, we didn't make, provide any safe facilities for those who walk and bike, they endorsed the Pine Street Coalition guidelines. And they're very simple. We want a separate, safe facility for people who walk, called a sidewalk, and we would like to have a bike way that's safe and separate, in this case, a separate bike way because there's no room with the constraints on the street to avoid protected bike lanes on the, on the Parkway route itself. So first, we, the opposition began with the walk and bike community, but it spread because of the, so it's called Plan BTV, you're talking about Plan BTV tonight, Plan BTV South End, which was rejected summarily at a draft hearing with David White, director in the consultancy, because somebody raised their hand, they assumed the parkway was going to be built, and somebody raised their hand and said, hey, everybody who's for the Champlain Parkway, please stand up, or, excuse me, please raise your hand. There were no hands raised. The point being that there was very little support, in fact, a great deal of opposition in the community to the Parkway as designed. The current environmental document, which, by the way, we will be challenging in court within the next thirty days, for those who are wondering about the newest suit against the city of Burlington and the state and the Federal Highway Department. The environmental document, the last public hearing on it was in two thousand six. What an exciting time, about eighty-nine people who spoke at City Hall, and that was the last time the public had a chance to weigh in on what they would like to have for the Parkway design. That was a year before iPhone was invented, it was a year before the first cycle track or protected bike lanes in the metro area in the United States in North America was built, as many of you know, in two thousand seven in Montreal, Quebec. The sole purpose of the coalition is to get a new EIS, to go to a bright slate. As you all know, that means you start and have a community-driven planning process using best practices and using modern approaches to street design. That's essentially what you see in the handout today. Roundabouts, this means roundabouts, which cut serious and fatal injuries by ninety percent. We have fifty-two years of experience in downtown roundabouts in Vermont, and there's been one pedestrian injury, not a single bicyclist that's been injured yet, and there were essentially three or four minor car-to-car injuries, but overall, one injury a decade. We have seventeen intersections in the city of Burlington that average one injury a year, much less one injury a decade. So, the forty-three million dollar project does not have an inch of separate and safe walkway or bike way. That's crazy. If that plan were brought into you today, and you looked at it, after we all got done rolling over in laughter on the floor, we'd say, go back and do it the right, the right way. As Jayden Spencer said, if we were doing this design today, this is not the way we'd do it. Pine Street Coalition says simply, do it right the first time. We'd have, probably cut to six acres of asphalt, one and a half lane miles of roadway that's not really necessary. The most obvious one is along the city market between Home Avenue, which is the end of the road to nowhere, which you know, and, and Flynn Avenue. We're building two streets. We only need one street. It doesn't take a genius designer of roadway and transportation to figure out that one street can handle the traffic. And more importantly, there's not even a safe access for me as a member of the city co-op to get to the parking lot with the design the way it's set up, the way it's set up. So we say the current EIS document, for a lot of reasons, is imbalanced, stale, and needs to be, basically, we need to start afresh. One of the items, we have the complete street salon, I've heard about that, that came in two thousand eleven, two years after this was closed down. That's how you could have the, like, a, a safe combination of, combination of those who walk and bike. We realize that there's not too much support to take, although, actually, it could take a little, but we'd love you to just take that item of the Champlain Parkway off the transportation plan, we know that's probably not realistic. I'm pleased to report that, again, finally, that the coalition will be taking action within the next four weeks to submit a court suit at U.S. Federal District Court to appeal the, the environmental document. And the last time this happened here in this area was something called the CIRC, which Brian Searle said they spent twenty million dollars on that one, and we know what happened to that. They haven't spent that much money yet on this one, but we feel we'd actually save money by not having to build as much roadway, and it would be a cost saving because the current design would actually increase injuries, which is counter to what we're trying to do with increased global warming emissions, because roundabouts cut emissions and gasoline use by thirty percent. We're putting in six new traffic signals. It makes, this is just, doesn't make sense today. Just off there, thank you.
Thank you very much. And what else would you say? There's maybe two more people besides me. Hi, I'm Carolyn Bays. Unfortunately, I didn't get to totally write this out, but I'm from Burlington, Vermont, and I've been living there since nineteen seventy-three, so I have seen the eighty new businesses on Pine Street now grow up from one of the lot of abandoned warehouses. And the main part of this design, it just, you know, does this to me, and I just, I may not go lie down there before they're allowed to build this Parkway. They want a dead end, Pine Street. Now, we have two ways to get out of Burlington right now and go south, Shelburne Road and Pine Street. But at the road to nowhere, just before you get to Green City Park, they're putting up a huge barricade, and that barricade's going to have a U-turn that's too small for our buses and too small for our major fire trucks. Now, to me, that's downright stupid, and how many people are going to drive down Pine Street not knowing it's a dead end and go around down there, and it'll be an incredible mess? So just think about trying to get out of Burlington at five o'clock. Right now, that traffic is backed up on Shelburne Road all the way to the traffic circle at Locust Street at five o'clock. Go down there and watch it. And Pine Street's probably worse. So are you going to let this Parkway go through and dead-end Pine Street? I talked to every single businessman I could find, which was maybe two hundred over a period of more than a year, that have some sort of face on Pine Street or just off of Pine Street, like Sears Lane. Ninety percent of those business people did not know about the Parkway dead-ending Pine Street. Only one was in favor of that dead end, and he was one person of a two-partnership architectural firm, and he said, this way, the Pine Street people will finally get the truck traffic off of Pine Street. People think this Parkway is going to make your travel on Pine Street better. You know, right now, Curtis Lumber, it's jammed up all, all over the place, starting more like three-thirty, not five o'clock. So I besiege, I lay down before you guys and say, stop this folly and get a redesign. It's not safe, it's forty-three million dollars. If we work with you, we can save, what is it, twenty million dollars or something?
Eight or nine.
We get seven, we get six acres of land back where all the houses were removed, we save Engelsby Ravine instead of trash, and you should see the bridge in that design over Engelsby Ravine, which is the most polluted of the city, and it needs help, it does not need to be trashed, and then we go through the parking lot to Lakeside and dump. You know, at five o'clock, two thousand people leave that building, innovation center. Five o'clock, and that's where you want to dump this Parkway? You want a real nightmare waiting to happen if you don't stop this. Thank you.
I'm Jack Dagan, I live in Burlington. Tony and Carolyn have done a good job of describing the situation, let me just add a couple of things. Environmental comments mostly. We're in the midst of a global climate crisis, and the right-of-way for the Champlain Parkway is mostly wooded, so hundreds and hundreds of trees have become, coming down. Everybody knows that trees clean the air, they're on the front lines against, to combat global warming and the climate crisis. And the original design for the Champlain Parkway was to, the thought was to bring as many cars off the expressway into downtown Burlington as possible. And we're not thinking that, that way anymore. One other thing would be that if, if this, if this is built, it would, it would not be a good environmental thing. You've got more cars coming into downtown, more pollution, more congestion, and so the new design that we have for, for Pine Street would eliminate the need for this, and it would be safer, provide bike and pedestrian lanes on both sides, and we feel that it's a much better alternative.
Steve, sit over here.
Sure, yes.
My name is Steve Goodkind, I was the city engineer and public works director for about thirty years in Burlington, and for a lot of that time, this project wasn't my project. So I probably know as much about it as anyone, maybe one or more of you, but I have a long, long history with this project, and I was responsible, in fact, for drafting an EIS in nineteen ninety-seven and one in two thousand six. I just, I'm not going to repeat what other people say, I'll give you a little bit of history here, put this in different perspective. Two thousand and six EIS had a preferred alternative, not the one the city recommended, but the one that the Fed seemed to be preferring, that basically changed the project in a fundamental way, basically ignored the northern end of the project up in the Maple King Street neighborhood, just said that's going to stay the way it is, concentrate on the south end. I don't know, I mean, people realize this, but the city of Burlington spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in three years fighting to prevent that from becoming the actual preferred alternative selected by the EIS. In two thousand nine, we were unsuccessful, and it was signed by the Federal Highway Administration. That became the EIS, we were told, take it or leave it, it's this for nothing, and the city reluctantly took it. I'm on the record before the city council saying I thought that decision was a travesty. It was not, in compliance with the purpose and need of the road, and basically you could say I lost all my relation for the project at that moment, even though I continued to work a little bit on it for next year or so. The thing that's happened, though, and I think this is almost a good thing, it hasn't been built in the last ten years, nothing's happened since two thousand and nine in way of construction, there's been some design changes, but nothing really fundamental. I think what people should understand is that during that time, Tony alluded to this, there's been changes in conditions in the field, major ones, there's been changes in rules, law, and there's been changes in how we look upon roads and the function of roads. You heard the word complete street, which, it's been a sea change. And actually, the idea that that would be the final EIS, well, I don't think the law really supports that now. I think, in fact, it's mandated that we should be doing another EIS, one that looks at the standards of today. Even the standards we were looking at in two thousand nine were already getting kind of longer than two, but we need a modern road. We've seen the example of the CIRC Highway and how that was turned around, you'd think the lesson would have been learned. That road and this road are close cousins, they were conceived of in the same grand ring road plan around the county. That road is going to be more of a complete street, it's not going to be a limited access highway. This one, for the most part, should not be, and it really needs a reworking. I don't say it needs it, it, it really demands, we'll be going to court, it will prevail, but that's what should be happening. We're not against the road or a road, but we believe it should be a twenty-first century road, one that we're all proud of. I think some of you may realize this, but the moment this is open, it needs correction, even by the city's own reckoning. It needs something else, in fact, there's the non-project, the, what do you call it, rail enterprise project? That so-called non-project is the corrective action for building this thing. That's how crazy it is. So I would urge everyone to think about it, I'm not sure what you can do, but if you at least know what's going on, you may understand it, that we don't say no road, something is needed, a modern road for the twenty-first century, we're going to get one shot at it, and if we don't take that shot and just do what's right, I think we'll look back and it'll be a pretty sad situation. No one is building roads like this anymore. It's not being done through urban areas like the smaller urban towns, it just isn't done. The complete street is the way to go, whatever that will mean to people, and I think that's what we need to be doing. So, thank you for your time, and if you hear what's happening, it's not a wild goose chase. I think this really needs to happen, it should happen, and we'll all be better off if it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, well, thank you very much for coming in. I apologize for having skipped over that item because it is an important opportunity for folks to speak of regional issues of importance. The next item, this will be, having jumped over one, make sure now we're at the approval of the minutes for the April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
No.
I didn't want to kick it around.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, changes, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Start, Catherine?
In the, in the past, we've indicated who, if, if an alternate is representing the community, and that, that wasn't put in the, under the names this time, because it isn't, you know, we try to make sure that everybody's identified correctly, but Colchester and Menusky, it's not indicated that they were alternates here.
Give the alternate some credit for showing up.
Exactly, absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Catherine?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, Jim?
Two, one suggestion and one stronger suggestion. First, for numbers eight and nine, if there's any way of moving the second paragraph of nine, oh, because I remembered reading through eight and going, well, what was the action? And then I read through nine and went, well, what was the action? And then I got beyond that and said, oh, now I remember, but if that was up at the front, it would make it clearer as you read through the minutes. So that was the suggestion part. The other one is a stronger suggestion, on ten, to give a brief description of what Bill asks, I've covered it up, S ninety-six. I have a little comment floating there.
What it relates to.
But what it relates to, because as you read through this whole thing, if you weren't there, you have no idea what funds are or what, what the whole discussion is about.
Oh, that makes sense.
So everything is very clear, once you know, and I, you know, I remember, I knew what it was about, so I understood it, but if you don't know that, just what, a short description of what S ninety-six is proposing, and then it doesn't make sense.
Makes sense to me. Any other comments, suggestions?
Specific, if I might amplify, obviously, that would be covered when Charlie reviewed the legislative considerations as Bill, as Bill, Charlie noted, and then put those issues in so that the minutes make sense.
Provides further context because we have, we, these have to be understandable to someone who wasn't there.
Yeah, someone who wasn't there.
And this year's S ninety-six isn't, S ninety-six from two years from now.
And we sometimes get caught in the notion that we have to get the preliminary minutes out so fast that we maybe summarize a little bit more than we should for the good of the public.
Any other comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Here, keep your hands up so Amy can see.
Do you want to abstain?
I just want to say for the record, for parliamentary rules, you don't have to abstain if you weren't here. You could do things like watch the Channel Seventeen tape or something like that, you really don't need to abstain. Everybody seems to do that, I just don't understand why.
Do let the minutes reflect. So the next item is the former item number seven, which is the two thousand nineteen Plan BTV Comprehensive Plan Approval Confirmation of Planning Process and Determination of Energy Compliance. Emily?
So in your packets, you have a memo regarding the, these, this plan review, and you also have the staff review that went before our planning advisory committee a few months ago. The Plan BTV, the comprehensive plan, is a pretty unique document of plans that we see before us because it does draw together a lot of the different planning documents that the city of Burlington puts together and brings them into the comprehensive plan. So although it does it in a very unique way, it does meet all the statutory requirements for municipal planning, and it has also an enhanced energy component to it, so the last few plans that have come through here, you've seen this review against these energy planning standards, and it meets those as well. In the review memo that went before the pack, you'll see that there's a couple items that are marked not, not applicable in the energy review. Burlington is in a pretty unique position in that it already has enough renewable energy generation within its borders that it's meeting its targets, so those are not applicable as opposed to in a lot of other municipalities that we see. So I'll wrap up by saying that both staff and the planning advisory committee does recommend approval and confirmation of the process and granting an affirmative determination of energy compliance for this document. We also have Megan Tuttle from the city of Burlington here, if there's any other questions or Megan, I'm not sure, I guess I'll hand it back to Chris if there's.
Would you like to say anything further, Megan?
I don't have anything prepared.
I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to say thank you for moving this item up on the agenda to be here. But just here, if there's any questions.
And I didn't forget it, I actually. Tonight, we're not so sure.
I'm glad this is your last meeting.
Yeah. Thank God. You've got to rethink that four-year, four-year limit now that you've come up with.
That's true, because O'Brien is coming in. I forgot.
Well, it was a reference to Republican. Now I'm, you know, replicating the final, you know, term of Reagan's presidency here.
Well, at least you're not turning orange.
So there is a staff recommended motion. Is there?
So I'll move the staff recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan, confirm the planning process, and grant an affirmative determination of energy compliance to the 2019 Plan BTV Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second.
And if I could just add a couple comments. Megan was really instrumental in putting this together. She led a pretty amazing process that brought in just lots of members of the community and really reworked the way the plan looks. Do you have a copy of it here by nature? Oh, too bad. I'll try and get a copy here for people to see at one of our future meetings. But it's really reformatting how it was all done in a much more, I think, user-friendly way and presented in a way that you can actually navigate through it and understand what it is. It meets, obviously, all the statutory goals and requirements, but if you follow just the statutory goals and requirements, you end up with a pretty dense document. And it's the kind of document in Burlington that we've been using for the last, I don't know how many years. And this one made some policy changes, but mostly what it did was reorganize the way it is. And I think as a document going forward, it's going to be one that will be much easier to update, much easier to see. And recently, in Burlington, we had done our form-based code, and that was all based on a prior plan for the downtown plan that we had done that was also a fairly unique way of doing it. And so plans really make a difference because they're the foundation for, for us, for all the zoning changes that we did and for the other things. And I know 10 years ago, a little bit more than 10 years ago, in Burlington, we had done a major rewrite of our zoning before we had a plan in place. And I will say, that process was a mess. And this time around, now that we have the plan, when we did the downtown, we had a good plan in place. When we have this one now in place, I think going forward, making the zoning changes, making the other changes, we'll really have a foundation to move forward with. So I just want to thank Megan for all the work that she put into it. And I think it's going to be an exciting document, and I hope to share it with all of you when we got, we got copies of it, because I think it's a really nice way of doing it.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any further, Jim?
Sorry.
No apologies.
A question for Emily. Note number 11. You'd said it did some compliance, but note, it says it's our understanding that the city of Burlington is doing it. Did you get that clarified, that it actually is or isn't? Because right now, it sounds like you're not sure.
Right. We did get confirmation that.
So as long as that's up, that's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Good work. Next up, if we could have a motion to open the public hearing for consideration.
I move we open a public hearing for consideration of the 2020 draft UPWP.
And budget?
Budget. Sorry. Well, UPWP really is the budget, so, but I'll be redundant if you.
Well, suspenders. Is there a second? Catherine, I'll give Catherine the second.
Mr. Chair, point of parliamentary inquiry.
Yes.
The presentation that we had from the group in Public to Be Heard really dealt with an issue that was on our agenda. And I didn't want to raise it at the time that it was being done, but I'm wondering if the minutes shouldn't reflect that that information does apply to the public hearing for the UPWP, because that was in, Champlain Parkway is an item on the UPWP, so it really wasn't not on our agenda.
It's true, the tip, I don't think it's the UPWP.
What's that? What's that?
I don't believe that Champlain Parkway is in our UPWP. It's in our, part of our tip, but not the UPWP.
So we don't have any work items?
We're not planning to do any studies of the Champlain Parkway in the coming.
So it's just in the tip?
Yep.
All right.
It's past our planning stage.
I understand that, but I didn't know whether there were other issues that were going to be involved because these things go in pieces. And so if the entire Champlain Parkway is now in the tip and it's not going to be part of the UPWP, I'm fine with that. Okay. That's why it was a parliamentary inquiry.
No problem. Are there any members of the public who would like to ask any questions or have any comments with respect to the draft UPWP and budget? Hearing none, I'll keep that open for the time being. Is there any further presentation to make to UPWP and budget?
So Mr. Chair, we keep that open until the time we actually close the public hearing and vote on the UPWP next month. Is that right?
No, this is.
Tonight? We're going to do it tonight?
Tonight.
So I don't, no, I don't want to do much of a presentation. I think you've, we've reviewed the UPWP previously. You have a memo in your packet that reviews some of the process, the UPWP committee, of which Vice Chair O'Brien chaired that committee, and John Zacony, Mike Bissonette, Jeff Bartley, and Sharon Murray were also on from the board on that committee, and as well as Barbara Elliott, who's not here tonight, but was representing the TAC on that committee. So the board was well represented on that committee. They met three times through the end of January to the end of March, and we reviewed it last month when we warned this public hearing. It's been sent out to all the municipalities, and the public notice has been made. The one comment, or I do have a staff proposed edit that we just caught today, which is, so when you're ready for a motion, ask that you include this edit, which is, we forgot to, or didn't catch that we should have carried forward some money from FY '19 to the FY '20 Work Program for Task 2323, which is our transportation policy planning task, to look at the level of service policy, which we're doing that with V-Trans. We had some consultant dollars in this fiscal year. So if we could add $30,000 to the carry-forward column for that task, 2323.
What line number?
2323 is, is 34. It's the version I'm looking at. Hopefully, we're all looking at the same version.
I'm trying to screen the glasses here.
Yeah. Paper to print out.
It is 34.
Yeah. Yeah, and you see, there's no, there's no carryover there and no consultant dollars, but we do have a consultant under contract for that, that just starting now.
That's 2323.
Yeah. 23, 2.3 point, 2.3.
I'm just trying to figure out what I was reading.
Valley, CEDG, how did that get in there?
Want an update? I'll give you one. It is still in yellow, isn't it, on the current draft?
Yeah, it's still in Penny. I don't think we have anything under contract yet, so.
Right. Well, the board approved full funding of Bolton Valley under this block grant at their April meeting.
Which board?
The Community Governor. Sorry. But we haven't gotten an official word or announcement from the secretary and the governor yet, so we're still waiting on that. The RPC was written into the contract to help us with grant administration, so that's why it also appears in the UPWP. And we're pretty sure and very hopeful that it will go forward at this point.
Happy to take any other questions on the Work Program or Budget?
Any questions or comments about that? Hearing none. One last inquiry as to whether there are any members of the public who wish to make a comment. Hearing none, I'll undertake a motion to close the public hearing. Dan moved. Jim second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed, and now undertake a motion to approve the draft UPWP and budget with the one carryover change that was noted by Mr. Baker. I'm sorry, hold.
Well, I believe in the past, we've voted on the transportation section, so the MPO voted on it to have the weighted vote, and then we voted on the entire.
We have two votes on this. Thank you for catching that, which I forgot.
So the first motion relates to?
For the transportation funding portion.
So make that motion.
Okay. We have that motion by Mike, second by Jim. Further discussion about that? Thank you, Bernie. See, now you've got this right here on top of that, so you'll get it, you'll get it right next year, because I failed miserably.
I thought that's what I said. First motion.
Is there any further discussion about the transportation component of this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. It was unanimous. And now, is there a motion for the balance of the UPWP and budget?
Sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks. The next item on the agenda is the report from the Board Development Committee on FY ' '20 Officer Nomination.
All right. Well, the report is in the packet. The Board Development Committee met last week. We did it over the phone and are recommending the following slate. Mike to be Chair, Catherine as Vice Chair, John Secretary Treasurer, Chris Shaw for at-large for towns over 5,000, Barbara Elliott for at-large for towns under 5,000. Chris gets relegated to immediate past Chair, and I step down from the Executive Committee.
You ride off.
I ride off from the Executive Committee.
How many years was it, Andy? Eight?
I don't know. A long.
As long as I can remember.
Been a while.
It's been saying much of these things.
No. So this is the recommended, recommended slate by the Board Development Committee at the, at our meeting next month. If there's anybody else, others can be nominated, but this is the recommendation from, from the committee. And thanks to everybody who put their names in.
So, and, and please, if somebody else is interested in running for any of those offices, please look into it and feel free to put your name into nomination at our annual meeting in June, which will be in beautiful Jericho.
Yes, I know. That's very exciting.
The next item is the discussion that was brought up at the tail end of our last monthly meeting, having to do with perhaps coming up with a more formalized way to check in to see if there are policy matters that the commission should evaluate and potentially weigh in on. That is handled in an ad hoc fashion currently, but the question was whether maybe that should be more a part of our, our regular discussion from time to time. So given that very short introduction, I'll hand it off to Charlie.
Yeah, and so there's a little memo in your packet on this. You know, there was a discussion about this at the Executive Committee and about how best to handle this. And I'll refer to it as more of a staff recommendation, since the Executive Committee did not take a vote or take action on this, but to recommend that we have kind of a standing item to talk about our engagement in policy issues in July and January, which for my view have been kind of the key points during the year, either in July where we, we know that there's, you know, maybe a summer study committee or some other policy issue that we're engaging with an agency with, that we want to engage with over the fall, has been typically the time where we formed ad hoc committees to work on issues. So last year was Act 250, for instance. And then in January, and I think the topic that was much more on my mind was S-96, that water quality bill, which really came up right at the beginning of the legislative session, where we got engaged, but again, you know, we didn't bring that through the board to actually check in with the board or ask.
It was not the optimal approach.
No.
That's been the case with the Act 250 stuff. It's been, it was the case with even some of the energy planning stuff a few years ago. We kind of, we got caught in a panic, okay? And what I'm hopeful, well, we did, okay? I mean, I sat here as a board member, and we were trying to make Act 250 policy and water quality policy, and I had only seen it when I opened up the board packet a week before the meeting, okay? And it doesn't allow board members to fully absorb, to do some background research if they feel they need to do it, check in with their town administrator, town manager, their select board, their planning commissions. And so what I, what I'd also like to see on this is maybe try to get out ahead of some things, because I think we end up chasing our tail. And it's great that the legislature wants to use this as a resource for things, but a lot of times, we don't fully think through the resources that we're providing because we get caught having to do something in three weeks. We have three Act 250, you know, meetings in three weeks, and it has to go through a couple committees, and it's, you know, it's, and I, and I know that we can't foresee everything, but we know water quality is going to be an issue, so let's work on it. Okay? We know Act 250 reform is going to be an issue, so let's plan for it and work on it so we don't get to January, and then we burn staff time inefficiently, and we make subcommittees and committees meet, you know, an inordinate number of times, so that hopefully we can get like 50%, 60%, optimize 75% of what's going to be discussed, so we don't get surprised by 25% instead of, oh, gosh, you know, what happened? And that's, that's kind of the frustration, and I know that that's part of the legislative game that we have. But the interesting thing about the legislative game is you have things that go through authorizing committees, okay? And authorizing committees are in the business of saying yes, because they're interested in the subject and those kinds of things. Then they send it to the money committees, and the money committees are the bad people who say no. So then the authorizing committees say, "Those bad money committees won't give us the money to do it," and they can run around and say, "We want to do this. We had a bill, but the money committees won't let us do it." So that gives us an opportunity to plug in at different levels on, on important things. I just don't want us to, I don't want to feel like we're continually in this chasing our tail motion, and that's, I don't know if I'm the only one that feels that way, but the last three years, that's kind of like what I feel. I feel we've been rushed. We've been, we were rushed on the energy stuff. We were rushed on Act 250. We've been rushed on water quality. You know, we get a big study in November, and we got to have our positions formulated by January 1st because they want to bring you in, you know, in the first round to testimony at the authorizing committee, Charlie. So those are the kinds of things that if this process can incorporate that kind of stuff, I think we would do ourselves better if we could take this in a more systematic and less last minute on everything. I know there's going to be some last minute stuff. There always is. That's the way the legislature works, and things happen. But, you know, we thought Act 250 was going to move this year. Didn't. We thought, well, water quality still, I guess, funding still could move.
Though part of the reason Act 250 probably didn't move is because of the input that was provided, so.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, but we, I really felt rushed, and I really felt uncomfortable that we weren't, I mean, not that Charlie wouldn't do this, but I don't think we were putting our best thinking through because we didn't have enough time to do it justice.
Well, and the trick, and this, and this is an effort to try to address this. The trick, of course, is things happen fast, deadlines are imposed, and you have to be nimble enough to respond more quickly than we'd like. And on the other hand, you want to anticipate, be ahead of the curve, be thoughtful, and come up with a well-considered position. And, you know, finding the golden mean between those two is the trick. And so the hope had been with a six-month check-in, you know, it's not that you have to wait till January to be talking about legislative issues. Hopefully, in July, the discussion is looking ahead. What's on, you know, and what can we do between July and January to start? And what issues is the commission interested in doing that?
Unfortunately, sometimes we get bills dropped on on some January 5th, and then we want Charlie to come down on January 11th to testify. You know, they know that happens.
Jim?
As I first saw this, my first reaction was, I think it's a good idea, but I wasn't sure about the months selected. And after Jeff's comment, I'm thinking, well, like December or November would probably be better because you, by that point, you have a good idea of what's going to be coming up in the legislature. Gives you a little more time to talk about it by the time you get to January to eliminate at least some of that last-minute rush.
I agree with that, but it's a little bit different in the second year of the biennium, because we kind of know what is going to come up and be pushed next year. It's much more wide open and dispersed than the first year, the first one.
But say maybe...
Like May, Nov-, I, I had the same thought too, as whether May, November, as opposed to July, January might work, because then in May, the, the legislative session is wrapping up and you probably, and then in November, you have time to hit the ground running by the time, or sometime to prepare for January at that point. So, yeah, that thought came to my mind as well, Jim.
May or June.
But, no, June, I don't think, no, that's why I said, June meeting, that's not going to work. So it'd be, and, and it works well too.
Hopefully not July.
Yeah, May, and November would be a six-month stagger and would give a little bit more lead time, because presumably the, the discussion at the commission level happens at the meeting in May or November. So then, okay, this is something we want to take a position on, this is something we want to work on. That will take time inevitably to move forward on. Yep?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, I understand all this with regard to the legislative session, but both the energy bill and the Act 250 bill came out of much larger processes that were instituted by the legislature too. So it's a question of also getting in on the front end of those things at the task force or the commission level and starting to try. And Charlie actually does a pretty good job of that and staff. It's just a question of how engaged the board wants to be way up front. But I also agree that there's a lot of stuff that just falls out of the sky in January.
Well, I mean, there was a big process of information and discussion on Act 250, but we didn't actually know what they were going to decide on until they dropped the bill. They didn't drop the bill till after the session started, so...
But we all kind of knew it was going to take longer than...
Yeah, probably. It scared the crap out of a whole bunch of people.
And therein lies the crapshoot on such a discussion, because there's no magic date.
There is.
I think often, ninety-odd percent of all legislative committee meetings are below November 15th. So you're going to get a pile of information on November 15th, but the bills generally don't come out until sometime in January. So, you know, if you meet in November, you're going to miss the January drop. If you do in January, you're well behind the curve on the November drop, so it's just a matter of pick your poison.
And I fully expect it'll take a few times of going through this before the commission sort of figures out, you know, what is it that we want to do and how do we want to handle this? And how, how forward-thinking do we want to be, because if you go out too far, then you're spending time and effort on things that may never come to, come to be, so...
As planners, I'm kind of hoping that we're going to end up being a little bit proactive, because that's what planners do, okay?
It's actually more effective than you can.
Yeah, but I realize there are limits on it. I just want us to maybe look deliberately to try to be proactive and recognize that we live in an imperfect world, and it's not going to happen all the time, because I, I mean, I, believe it or not, I do this for fun, and I don't like to have anxiety about things, and things that I do for fun. And sometimes I have an awful lot of anxiety, because I care about the direction that we're going, and I don't feel like maybe we are giving it enough of our best effort. We always give it the hardest effort that we do. I just want us to try to be a little smarter with some of those resources.
Yeah, yeah, see that, when we talked about, let me think, executive committee level, we were looking at two gates that would be regular check-ins no matter what. It doesn't mean that Charlie can't bring stuff at another meeting at another time.
Or interview.
We were just looking at six months apart, just to do it as a matter of planning, and just so everybody's aware. But of course, if things are moving and we have to have discussions, you know, this kind of thing can happen three times a year or four times a year, whatever. So it's not meant to circumvent and prevent anything, it's just meant to have it on there, which hopefully then facilitates that better discussion.
And it's part of our agenda to be a resource, and not just ask for something all the time, but actually be a good supplier of thought and, and, and good policy and those kinds of things, so that the legislature, we want the legislature to look at Charlie's lines, we don't run him ragged, okay? And so, I look at this as a, as an effort to try to help the staff maybe become a little bit more focused, so that our expenditure of resources are on the things that give us the higher, highest rate of return, you know, intellectually. And, and planning-wise, I'm not talking about a financial rate of return, because I think we're at the point where our staff is pretty maxed out in what it is that they can handle with all the statutory responsibilities, doing the billable time to keep the budget afloat, okay? So what we need to do is try to throw off the things that aren't, that are nice, and if we only had the resources to do them, but aren't terribly important, and focus on the things that are important to us. And that's, that's all that I'm trying to do by stirring this pot.
Any other thoughts or comments on this topic?
Can I add a couple thoughts? One is just, sorry, I'm going anyway.
Since we're defining, since we're defining your job description, why should you have anything?
So I just, you know, so it's May.
Well, and to that point, I think there's no action item for this, it's a discussion, and I would leave it to the chair and the executive committee to discuss and determine, and it will show up on our agenda sometime in the latter part of this calendar year or the beginning of next, when folks, having chewed on it a little bit more, think, given where things are at, and every year might not be the same. There might be some times when November makes sense, there may be times when December or January makes sense. So, the thought was, but let's make sure it is at least a semi-annual tickler on our agenda, and then leave it to the, the chair and the executive committee to figure out the optimal time to do it.
And that's why I was just going to kind of, you know, try to manage expectations as well. Like, it is May, you know, they're not, they're not done in the past year. And so, I think it will be, you know, from May through July where we know which things kicked out that, you know, might be a study committee we want to engage in or not, or, and what I'm perceiving or expecting is that I'm probably going to be bringing a, a list. You know, there's a, here's a handful of issues that are going to be getting kicked around in the next six months. Which of these do we want to spend the, you know, invest time and energy in? And, and the same thing happened at the end of the calendar year. Yeah, November, we may know some, that could be, could be January before we know. So, just in terms of expectations, and I agree, it's going to be a little fuzzy as we do this, and...
And I think ultimately, it's really Charlie, you, and the staff interacting with the executive committee to make sure that we're covering the things that we need to cover.
Yeah.
As a general commissioner, I just want to know what's going on, and when you're going to ask us for something to get a little bit more notice, then, you know, just when the package comes out.
And what I took away from the last meeting, though, also was that the full board does want the chance to weigh in on, you know, which of those issues we're going to engage in, or, or maybe there's an issue that one of you has identified that I didn't, that you're saying, hey, there's something else going on over here. Like, it, it, I'm looking at, this is a real opportunity to have that open conversation about which of the...
You know the subtleties, because you're in the space and you see what's going on. We only get to see what shows up on the, the press accounts or through people that we have, and we may not have the full block of information, but trust me.
Lots of times I don't either.
Well, but you have more than us, so, but most of the time, you have more than us, okay?
Good find out, yep.
And when you, when there are some details and some things, I'm not shy about calling you up and telling you about what, you know, that, with that...
You don't all have to do that every month, but Jeff is not shy about taking...
But that's part of my role.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it.
You'll miss me when I'm gone.
So, any further thoughts?
Yeah, so we'll take this as feedback and kind of build it into our agenda calendar. So, thank you.
And this makes for a great segue into the executive director's report, including legislative update.
So, speaking of not being run around ragged, I just ran down there this afternoon, because S-96 was going to be in front of a committee, and after I got there, found out they decided to postpone it till tomorrow morning, so...
It's talking morning, right?
Yeah, it's eight-thirty, plenty of time. But, so, just to refresh our memory, so, S-96 is this water quality bill. It's got two major components in it right now that are in varying degrees of debate. The, the big part of it that's under debate is how to raise money to fill in the water quality gap now that, or funding gap, now that they are shifting away from what they've done the last couple of years, which is take a good chunk of the capital budget and put it towards water quality. So now they're saying, okay, we're, we're going to stop doing that. How are we going to fill that funding gap? And it's in the media, some of this is getting characterized as they decided to do cloud computing tax. It's a little more nuanced than that. What House Ways and Means actually did was they actually took four percent of the rooms and meals tax for water quality. That's what's in S-96. And then they decided to backfill the education funding gap that that left with this cloud computing tax. I'm not sure of the, the political dynamics or legislative dynamics of that, but, but the cloud computing tax revenue is actually targeted for the education fund, not water quality, so...
It's a hundred percent education fund.
Yep.
Concept now, whereas meals and rooms is seventy-five percent general fund, twenty-five percent education fund.
And they took a chunk of the rooms and meals now for water quality, four percent of it.
So, and did they take that off the twenty-five percent that goes to the education?
That's what I'm assuming. Yep. And then, and then the cloud tax is trying to fill that in the education fund. So I don't, as much as I know, I don't quite understand the, the, the dynamics of why Ways and Means did it that way, but clearly there was some intent and purpose behind it. And so, but S-96, this water quality bill, is getting considered in the Senate committees. The Senate passed it a month and a half ago. The House changed it. It's now back in the Senate to kind of review what the House did, see if they need to go, go to a conference committee. But my sense is that they're going to probably resolve this in the next, you know, what's today? Wednesday? Thursday or Friday? I expect this to get resolved. And in terms of, I mentioned two issues. One was the funding. The second that this bill does is really sets up this notion of watershed-oriented clean water service providers that the A and R will funnel money to and to reach a pollution reduction target in that watershed. So one watershed may get a million dollars, another watershed may get five million dollars, being optimistic. Maybe a hundred thousand and five hundred thousand to address the pollution reduction goal. And it sets up basically a new distribution system for water quality funding, trying to get it more local and get more local decision-makers making the decision rather than the state agency. So, that's, that's, you hear it called, you know, a, a new distribution model for water quality funding, so that's the more substantive part of the bill. And I think there's pretty decent now support for that, but, you know, if, if the system stayed as it is, I think there are some people that'd be just as happy with that too, so... But that's, that's the status on that. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And just so you know, this whole clean water service provider thing is, it's kind of got probably a three-year tail on it before it actually would go into effect. The secretary has to do a bunch of rulemaking, has to do a lot of analytics to determine those pollution reduction targets in each watershed. So there's, there's quite a bit of work on A and R in the interim before anything actually changes. So this is one of those with kind of a long tail that we're looking downstream.
Now, has the enforcement piece that we're concerned about, has that come back, or where is that at?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so, so the big thing, I think, that we were able to accomplish in the House was to get the enforcement provision out of the bill. The last time we talked, a month ago, it was, you know, it started, it started to feel like a permit that the clean water service provider and, you know, when it was getting discussed in the Senate, they were definitely leaning towards using regional planning commissions, so this is why we're so focused on this, as a clean water service provider. That enforcement provision was taken out of the House version, but it was in the version that the Senate passed. So that, that was why I was heading down today, because the Senate was kind of questioning why that came out, and it's going to reaffirm that that was a good idea.
That's your plan for tomorrow morning?
That is the mission. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions about S-96?
Do we need badges?
Sorry?
Do we need badges?
Not yet. Guns and badges, yeah. Not, but not yet. The other thing, I think, we've, we've kind of touched on, I think most people have probably seen in the media, the Act 250 bill is going to be held in the House Natural Resources Committee until next year. So, you know, we'll have, we'll have more time to beat on the draft that is, that exists to date, summer, fall. And, you know, there's lots of other things going on down there, which I'm not engaged in too much. Maybe I should have, but didn't, but, so, happy to try to take any other questions, but that's all I've got on the legislative update.
Any questions?
Cool. And then just a reminder, annual meeting next month, June nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth? So I'm sure it's here on the next page. It's going to be in Jericho. Hopefully, you've all been getting, you know, save the dates, and I'm not sure if Emma has sent the actual registration email yet. I think she may be sending it tomorrow. So, just hoping you can make it. You know, most of the agenda is focused on celebrating Bernie and Peter and their potential retirements. It's your last chance to talk Bernie out of it.
Nothing's official till it's official.
But, yeah, so hoping you can all make, make it for that event. Appreciate it, and happy to answer any questions on that, but...
All right. Next time on the agenda are committee liaison activities and reports that are there for your perusal and enjoyment. Are there any members' items or other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Pick anyone you like, Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks, and my apologies again for fumbling there.
Well, one week from tomorrow, or one week from Friday. Greece, Athens. Greece is the word.